I don't have.
There's a memo.
Hey, can I see your packet?
Yeah.
Something's wrong, my machine's not responding, so. That's the sign that we can get started. All right, good evening, everybody. We're going to start this Isaguac City Council work session meeting for Monday, April 14th. And on the agenda this evening is a single item, Agenda Bill 6705, the I-502 recreational marijuana regulations. This is an issue that was in front of our Land and Shore Committee a couple of months ago, and we're going to have a presentation this evening from Jason Rogers. And we'll get to you in a minute, Jason, but this is one of the many opportunities we wanted to create for our public to give input. A statewide initiative to legalize recreational marijuana is one thing, but then to actually bring the businesses into each community. We're taking this opportunity to be thorough, to be diligent, to consider the alternatives, to consider what we've learned from our, from the medical marijuana business that's in town, and to take all that and public comments into consideration before we, the City of Isaguac, enact our regulations around this. So this is an opportunity, the last opportunity for the all committee to, the entire council to get together. I think we expect from here that this will come in front of the council again in a regular meeting. Do we know the date on that? Is it?
Well, the moratorium ends July 7th.
Right.
And we certainly hope that we would take action on a bill prior to that.
Okay.
So I believe that we expect to see it at Land and Shore either next month or June for presentation to the full council after that.
All right, thank you, Tola. Okay, so with that, I'm actually, that was probably part of Tola's presentation. So, Tola, I would wonder if you'd like to make some introductory comments? And actually, I've asked Tola, we'll kind of be facilitating, as this is an issue that has gone through Land and Shore Committee as chair, Tola will be facilitating this agenda item. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. I think that, first off, as I mentioned, this is, this is an opportunity for all of us. Basically, the last time this came before Land and Shore, we were hoping for some clarity out of the state legislature. So we didn't really go into the minutia of the proposed amendments to city code that would allow us to move forward with implementing some flavor related to I-502. So we thought, well, we want to, we want to talk to the rest of the council members, get them involved in the process, then it'll come back to Land and Shore. And of course, then we'll make a recommendation that comes back to full council. So Jason's going to give us a presentation. I imagine he's going to talk about the process so far, what we have in front of us, where we are at compared to where the state is at, the latest legislatively from the state. I think at, at some point, we'll get some information on potential other things we might want to add, other policy that we might want to put in, in trying as additional amendments, opportunities for that. We have a couple of members, a couple of our commanders from the Isaguac Police Department here today that maybe we can ask questions to regarding public safety. I imagine at some point you may want to get public comment, and then maybe some discussion after that from the body as to what they've heard so far. That's kind of my, my hope on how things go. So with that, I'd like to ask Jason to share with us his presentation.
Okay. I'm Jason Rogers with the Development Services Department, and I'll give at least a brief presentation here to walk through this. So the questions we're looking at here are whether, first of all, whether to enact a full ban or not. This is certainly, according to the, at least according to the Attorney General, this is an option. That it has, it would have potential issues, but it's certainly an option. If you don't want to do a full ban, then you have a couple of choices. You could enact specific zoning regulations, which is what's in the Agenda Bill. So that's the ones that's proposed by the administration. You could also modify them, of course, because these aren't, of course, adopted, they're not set in stone. Another option, of course, is to not adopt specific regulations at all. This has been done by another city in the area, and other cities are certainly talking about this. So, quick background, I-502 was adopted by the voters of this state back in November 2012. Among other things, it made possession of up to one ounce of marijuana legal for adults over 21. It also mandated that the Liquor Control Board adopt rules at the state level to implement a full marijuana market. And it mandated that they do this by December 2013. They did this by November 2013, so they cut it a little close, but they, they did get it done. The administration originally proposed regulations for, to accommodate the I-502 market back in August. Because there was a lot of uncertainty at the time, the council adopted a six-month moratorium in September, and then extended on February 18th of this year. So the current status is the Liquor Control Board rules are final. The application window for any facilities, whether it's producers, processors, or retailers, is closed. It closed back earlier this year, so they're not taking any more. In Isaguac, we got applications for 19 retailers and two producer-processers. The state has allocated, the Liquor Control Board, that is, has allocated only one retail store to Isaguac. There will be 334 statewide. They're distributed by population, so our share of the 334 is one. Seattle, for example, will get more of that. Smamish has one, Bellevue has a couple. So that's how that is set up. And then our moratorium, after it was extended, will expire on July 7th, so that's why we're here talking about all this.
Jason, may I ask you a question?
Of course.
So our allocation for retail from the Liquor Control Board is one.
Yeah.
Is there any limit on the producer-processor licenses?
No, not, not at, not at the local level. The only cap on that is Liquor Control is, has decided they want to have about 2 million square feet of production statewide. And they'll issue enough licenses to do that, but as far as they care, all those licenses could be in Spokane, or they could be in Bellevue, or Seattle, or even here. It hasn't worked out that way, of course, but there, there's no real cap.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And the, when you're talking about the applications, this is for a license?
Correct.
And, and the application window, was that established by the number that we're going to be allowed, and all of them have been filled? Or why did the application window close?
Liquor Control opened just a limited application window because they wanted to get a big group of license, of potential licensees, and then select from that. And they didn't want to have it be this continuous rolling thing, because they have more, they have way more applications than they can possibly issue as of right now. So if they had left the window open, they would be getting more and more and more, which doesn't help them.
And the application window is closed, but have they issued licenses?
As of early last week, they had issued, I believe, six, all to producer-processors. No retailers have a license yet.
Thank you.
And Jason, can you remind us, as I recall, somebody can be a retailer, or they can be a producer-processor, or they can be, there's a middle one, right?
Right.
But you can't be more than one in the, in the food chain, so to speak.
Correct, correct. So there, so it's a three-tiered system. You have the, the producers, which are the growers, and then you have the processors and the, the middle people, and then you have the retailers. They also allow a combined producer-processor license, you know, economies of scale kind of thing, because a lot, a lot of people can grow it and then process it into things that, that you or I could actually consume, like, you know, whether it be joints to smoke, or brownies, or oils, things like that.
Thank you.
So some of the issues that have been brought up, the Land and Shore Committee has asked us multiple questions. This is not a full list, but this, these are the biggest ones. One of the big ones, of course, is, Tola mentioned, potential legislative action. That's not going to happen this year. The legislature adjourned about a month ago, they didn't take, or they took one minor action related to marijuana, which doesn't affect us at all. Every other bill died. Public safety, of course, is a big issue, and fortunately, we have a couple officers from Isaguac Police Department here tonight, if you have questions about that. There's been issues to compare the medical and recreational marijuana laws and, and how Isaguac deals with medical marijuana versus how the administration is proposing to accommodate recreational marijuana. Another big issue that's come up is what we call dispersal versus concentration. And what we mean by that is, in our medical marijuana regulations, we require the collective gardens to be 1,000 feet apart, so they have to stay that, at least that distance. State law for recreational marijuana doesn't have that requirement, but according to the state Attorney General's opinion, we could certainly impose something like that if that's the wish. We could also go the other way and say, no, we don't want them dispersed, we actually want to say, be very restrictive on zoning and focus them all in, in one particular area. Of course, the possibility of a full ban of recreational marijuana.
Can I ask a question again?
Sure.
Let me bring this up, now I will. You said that we could decide to concentrate all of our one facilities in one place? Is that what you mean?
Well.
If we can only have one, then who cares where it goes?
Well, what I mean by that is, so that, so Isaguac has, there's, there's the 19 retail locations and the two producer-processors. We, so that means at the maximum, we'll have three. We'll have two, the two producer-processors and the one retailer. So one option is, is, just as an example, we could say, these facilities, recreational marijuana facilities of any kind are only allowed in, for example, the intensive commercial zone, period, end of story. They don't get to go anywhere else in the city. That's a pretty small zone, I can, there's a big zone up on the wall there, which you, which isn't really visible, but I can pull one up here later, so.
Okay. So it's those three that we're talking about, whether they'd be dispersed or in one place?
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And then another big issue was revenue to local jurisdictions, which was something we were hoping the state legislature would address. There were a couple bills that would have provided some additional revenue, unfortunately, they didn't pass. So what we're left with is then the local BNO tax, and then local sales tax. So another big question is, what are some other cities and doing? And so I've listed just four of them here. There's a couple, there's a few more examples on, there's a table on page seven of the, of the memo that was sent out to you. So Bellevue is currently considering a full ban. They have an interim, what they call interim regulations in place, which is similar to a moratorium, but they just designate a very basic set of regulations and, and use that for the interim period, the six-month period, while they consider what they want to do. The reason they're considering a full ban is because they, they have these interim regulations, but since licenses are beginning to be issued, they don't want to get themselves caught in a situation where they get a licensed facility that opens their door, and then their council decides, no, we want to ban this, or we don't want this facility in that zone. So they're very concerned about, about essentially non-conforming uses. Redmond is still going through their process. Their planning commission has recommended a set of regulations, and that should be going to their city council soon, but it's not final yet. Their regulations would allow, let me see if I got this right. It would be extremely restrictive for, because they would mandate 1,000-foot separation from residential zones, in addition to all the various things that state law requires, which would severely limit their map. And I think it, based on the way their zoning is set up, they would actually, in practice, only allow marijuana processors, and not producers, and not retailers. So that's something that they're actually looking at, because it may be overly restrictive. Kirkland has decided to not adopt any special regulations for marijuana at all. They're going to apply their current codes and, and regulations. And so, so say a retailer, they're going to treat a marijuana retailer like any other retail facility, and it can go in their, you know, in their commercial zones, where they would allow any other retail. Of course, the state rules about 1,000 feet from schools and libraries and daycare still applies, so, you know, they're not, in practice, going to be locating right next to a high school. In the City of Renton, they adopted permanent regulations a couple of months ago. It allows the producers and processors in industrial zones, and allows retailers in most of their commercial zones. And then there are also questions about Colorado and how their experience is going so far. They've had some, you know, it's, it's only been going on for four months, and there's very limited data so far, so it's tough to draw any kind of conclusions. The big issue there is the so-called balkanization, and I actually have a map of Colorado I can hand out, which just shows which counties in Colorado have banned it versus which have allowed it. It's a lot of red on that map and very little green, so you end up with very few areas that can, where you can legally sell recreational marijuana. Their tax receipts, you know, they, they made estimates, similar to how our state legislature made some estimates of how much money this might bring in, but it's been all over the map. You know, they, one month they were way above, the next month they were way below, and then they're only a little bit below, so that's going to be something to watch, shake out over the next year or so. They have not had any indications of increased crime. There has been some anecdotal evidence that they've seen an increase in driving under the influence there, but again, because we're only talking about a couple months of data, that could just be a blip. You don't, and you don't really know. So that bears watching as, as time goes on. So that's all I have for the presentation. I can certainly answer any questions.
Jason, I'll ask, in what the PPC has recommended and is currently in 6705, how does that compare with the state guidelines? In other words, do we have anything currently in 6705 that is more restrictive than what they have for the state?
Sure. So I'll refer you to, there was, there was a memo which is dated January 9th, which was sent to the Land and Shore Committee, and it should have been included in this packet. That contains the most recent administration's recommendation. So a lot of this stuff comes straight out of state law, like, all those definitions are straight out of state law. One thing that we were, are proposing to require would be a Level 2 administrative site development permit. State law doesn't specifically talk about local permitting, of course, because that's not what state law does, but that's something we would do. That's an administrative decision. It requires neighbor notification to everybody within 300 feet. On page, let's see, page seven and eight of 12 here, this is where the meat of it is. So, so the first thing that we would be requiring that the state does not mandate would be that these facilities be entirely indoors. The state does allow outdoor growing. They, they got quite a bit of public comment on that issue after they, during their rulemaking process, especially from people who would be operating in Eastern Washington, and, and also from some members of the environmental community who are concerned about the energy use of the, of this. You know, these are pretty intense grow lights and a pretty large amount of water that gets used. So outdoor grows in, in Eastern Washington can be less energy-intensive. So they allow outdoor grows, we wouldn't allow that for a variety of reasons. See here. We would add on a requirement that you couldn't locate a recreational facility in the same place as a medical marijuana collective garden. That's not specifically in state law, although in practice, Liquor Control has said they probably wouldn't do that anyway. We have a, a list here, and all the security requirements are above what the state requires. They, they don't require quite as intensive a security camera system or an alarm system as we are looking at requiring. And then we specifically ban home occupations. In practice, again, the state wouldn't issue a license for a private home because there are access issues. The state Liquor Control Board needs to have access to these facilities at all times so that they can perform inspections and things. There are issues with entering private homes, of course, so they wouldn't do it, but it's not, it's not explicitly laid out in their rules, but we're saying no home occupations.
Is it, is it safe to say that the areas where we are more restricted than the state are to put us, to put the recreational in a comparable footing to where we currently have medical?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, do you know what Bellevue's timing is? We touched on it briefly at Land and Shore.
So what I know is that Bellevue's more, their current interim zoning, excuse me, expires on, I believe, the 23rd, I believe the 23rd of this month, so that's only a week away. So they, so they'll need to take action. In fact, they're probably taking some kind of action tonight, because I believe Monday is their regular city council meeting nights, but I don't know what, what they're going to do, to be honest. Bellevue has typically operated as, with regards to marijuana, by using the emergency clause, and so they don't, they do it basically as late as they can.
And are you familiar with, I'm not sure you are, so I don't know whether you have answered this question, familiar with what, if any, complaints we've gotten regarding our medical marijuana facilities from neighboring businesses or residents?
Sure. So the first one to open up, Green Link Collective, which is on Gilman Boulevard, kind of behind the, the caboose, the caboose there. There were some initial complaints there involving parking, because, I don't know if, if any of you have ever been, been there, but it's right next to Pagoachian, so their driveway is a little bit hidden, and so people, what happened is people were parking in the next shopping center over, and then hopping the guardrail by the trail, and then walking over, which was not a good thing. So there were some initial complaints with parking, but those died away at, once the facility was open for longer. Since then, we haven't heard anything about it, they've been operating fine. The second one, East Side Green Light on Northeast Juniper Street, we haven't heard any complaints about them. You're probably all aware, for better for worse, of the proposal back on First Place, which ultimately was denied, but that, of course, garnered a fairly sizable public reaction due to its location. And so that's what we've heard.
Thank you.
And you, can you remind the council how the decision was made on that last one that you just?
Sure, so.
How was adjudicated?
Yeah, so there was a proposal for a collective garden on First Place Northwest at approximately Alder Street, I believe. And that proposal, so at the time, our, our maps didn't show the Isaguac libraries being one of the locations requiring a buffer, and so the applicant believed that that location would work. As we went through the process, you know, and we, and first of all, we got a lot of complaints from the neighbors, and then we, we analyzed the code more carefully and realized that the Isaguac library, even though it isn't specifically called out in the code as requiring 1,000 feet, does in fact meet the definition of a community center. And clearly, there's a lot of youth frequenting the library. So that combined with the senior center, which is also at, as it turns out, quite close, and very clearly meets the definition of community center, we're both within 1,000 feet of this location. Because of that, we denied the application.
Thank you. Other questions for Jason? So I'd like to ask at this point if either Commander Conrad or Commander Beerbaum would care to join us and, and talk about this a little bit?
Good evening.
Good evening, thanks for joining us.
Don't touch the button.
So I'll follow on a question that was, that was asked a little earlier about complaints on medical marijuana, the facilities, the medical marijuana facilities that have already been here, and ask if you're aware of any other public safety issues in regards to the implementation of medical marijuana in the city.
No, we haven't had any other complaints or issues regarding medical marijuana at those, at the collective gardens. We haven't had anything at that point. I know we had, at one point, one of the collective gardens had an issue with its security system at one point.
So, so just some more background, one thing we require for all the, the medical marijuana collective gardens is, of course, we require security systems and alarms. We also require an annual inspection for a license. When we did a, a, an inspection for one of them, there were some, is this working?
It's, it's out, you have the button out.
Okay.
You press it, there you go.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay. Anyway, there, they had some issues with their, with their security system, but those were resolved. You know, Commander Conrad and I were, were out there and talked them through it, so.
Gotcha. And, and I'll just add for, for our audience that this is Commander Beerbaum, seems to be Chief Beerbaum. Who's, who's with us? And Commander Conrad is here as well. So as you see, Commander, have you, have you had a chance to take a look at the proposed PPC amendments? Do you see any gaps or, can you speak to the public safety aspects of this potential implementation of recreational marijuana, specifically where we may have any gaps or where you would have concerns if we went forward with the administrat-
No, go ahead.
With the administration's recommendation?
I believe that the consistent precautions on, regarding the medical marijuana facilities and the recreational, the recording and the alarms, I think is an important aspect for consistency. I believe that we would need to take a look at our municipal code to provide us an opportunity for addressing public consumption of marijuana as well. Currently, state law allows it as like, it's a class III civil infraction, and if we could address that within municipal code, we can keep that within our, our court. That would help us with increased focus on that, and obviously, addressing our goal of reducing access to minors. We would be partnering with Liquor Control Board as well to help enforce stings or reduction to access to minors. But in, in our specific code, though, I think addressing the municipal code on public consumption, I think that would be a, a help to address this issue.
So that would, sorry.
No, I think that's it.
So that would be sort of a request for additional language clarifying public consumption and making sure that that comes before our court?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. Do you have any concerns about, one of the things that I don't think is in here currently that was in the medical marijuana piece was separation of, separation of facilities?
I believe it is. I believe it's listed in the, in the separation of the facilities, of the retail versus processor and growers.
Jason?
No, that's, that's not, not in there.
Oh.
We, we opted to stick with the state requirements, which, you know, keep them 1,000 feet from the schools and parks and libraries.
But you could have a retailer right next to a processor?
In theory, yes.
Because I know that was one of the things that was important to us for medical, and we felt was a public safety concern, right? Because you want to keep large quantities of valuable things away from the, where people are going to naturally go to buy said things. If I could be general.
Yeah.
So we could if we, but would we legally be allowed to, if we wanted to add something that said that any, any, any recreational marijuana facility would be, that we could require to have a separation from any other medical marijuana facility, be it retailer or processor or whatever the other one?
Yes, we could, we could do that. That's, you know, a valid exercise of our city's police powers under zoning and everything.
Okay. So in terms of enforcement, this issue of the fact that this is the dreaded unfunded mandate that we always hear about from our government, Liquor Control Board would do some enforcement? They would do some checking and?
Yeah.
How would that work versus the, the effort that would be requested out of the IPD?
Similar to what, Liquor Control Board has the primary responsibility for enforcing the majority of like the, the retail and the processor and growing rules, similar to like how liquor enforcement is, is they are working with the establishments to reduce access or inappropriate, you know, sales of the, the goods. But in this situation, we would anticipate supplementing their efforts, because that's, that's how we work with them currently to reduce alcohol, or reduce access of alcohol to minors as well. So that would be a, a similar expectation.
Thank you. Other questions?
There was a slide that Jason had that showed some choices that we had. I guess I'd like to get Isaguac Police Department's opinion on those as well, not just the current one that's in front, but he had some.
These are the big picture policy questions.
No.
The next one, issues we might face.
Yes.
Oh, okay, this, this is the list of issues that were, that, of the bigger issues that have been brought up over the last several months.
Actually, that wasn't what I was thinking about either. Never mind, if I can figure out what the issues were, I'll bring them back up, but it was something to do with choices that we would have.
It's probably.
He introduced this slide as choices. That's probably what you're remembering. I wrote down choices, too. I just updated it to. I just updated it to policy questions.
Well, maybe just the 1,000-foot question that Tola asked is fine. That's fine. I'm good.
Other questions from fellow council members?
I'm sorry for being the new kid, knowing as much as you guys have been talking about this longer. But the medical marijuana and the recreational marijuana, and I'm thinking, we're always talking about the state, but we're not talking about the federal. And is medical marijuana okay with the federal government yet? It's not, right?
I would say that's a very complicated question. So, if I can put this all in context. So, the guidance from the Federal Department of Justice is that they're not going to interfere initially with Colorado and Washington's legalized recreational marijuana system because, but they put a lot, they put some caveats on that. And I don't have, I think it's there's six or eight specific criteria they're looking at. One of them is access to minors. One of them is marijuana not crossing state lines, things of those nature. So, because the legalized, the recreational systems are very heavily regulated, they're willing to let that play out. They have made comments in public about the medical system because Washington's medical marijuana system is extremely unregulated compared to the recreational system or compared to, say, Colorado's medical marijuana system. And the federal government, or more specifically, the U.S. Attorney for Western Washington, Jenny Durkin, has called it untenable before.
The medical marijuana.
The system, right.
Environment, yeah, system, okay. Untenable.
Right. And so that put a lot of, and so that put a lot of political pressure on the legislature during this last short session to do something, which is why there were so many bills, none of which passed. But it's still an open question as to what the federal government will or won't do. You know, they have conducted raids in the past. They could clearly conduct raids in the future. But we, nobody knows, is the short answer.
Commander Beerbaum, can you speak to that in terms of where we, where there's some policing aspects to medical versus recreational, right?
There are. I think, well, it is a complicated issue. It has been for the past several years of policing the medical marijuana. There still is access of people to under 21. They have access to it with medical marijuana, which then creates kind of that divide of what the intent of the recreational is. So it is definitely a gray area for our, for enforcement of it.
Okay. The Washington State Liquor Control Board rules, and I'm sorry, there is so much that I'm catching up with. Can you summarize what they cover? They seem to be just business license-type rules.
Yeah, in general, that would be accurate.
So their use and regulation and minors and where you sell it and hours of operation and that kind of thing. They don't say anything about the product or labeling or product authenticity or, I'm just kind of fishing around.
Yeah. So they do contain some labeling requirements. And there is a, and they'll all contain a lot number and a batch number or however it ends up being organized. And so you, and partly that's that they can track it, but also so that people in general know that, yes, this is a real product that's come from, you know, a grower in Afraidah, processed in Moses Lake, and then sold in a retailer in Seattle. There, included in that labeling requirement is the THC concentration. So theoretically, that's how high is it going to get you how quickly. But you're right, it is mostly business, what would look like business licensing rules. There are some signage restrictions. I believe it's 1,200 square inches, which is not that big. It's far below what our general sign code would allow for any other retail shop. It talks about, you know, financing and business plans and penalties. There's a bit about what would disqualify somebody from getting a license involving their so-called point system. So, but yeah, it's generally business licensing with a few extras added on.
I have a question about unincorporated King County. How's it going to work for unincorporated King County?
King County adopted regulations several months ago. I don't know if anybody recalls. There were a couple of stories in the Seattle Times earlier this year about the Redmond Ridge residents all showed up at the King County Council and forced a delay in the King County Council adopting regulations because they didn't want marijuana facilities close to, or in their community, rather. So, the county council removed that specific zone from where marijuana facilities would be allowed and then passed the rules a month later. So, King County has zoning rules. I've mentioned it before, it's not nearly so relevant now, but one would be allowed, a retailer would be allowed in the Clehawney Shopping Center, for one example, because that's an unincorporated King County and it's zoned correctly. You know, and any other area of King County that's also zoned that could have a retailer.
Are there any quota or, obviously, it'll have the same rules in terms of parks and youth facilities. But are there any, you know, could you have 10 of them in Preston?
In theory, yes, you could. I don't remember the exact number of at-large retail licenses available. But, you know, Liquor Control doesn't have any dispersal rules and King County does not have dispersal rules. So, yeah, you could focus them all in one place.
I'd like to also ask Commander Beerbaum about, would you see any staffing or budgetary impact as a result of, if we moved forward with this bill?
Well, the reality of having one retailer, I mean, if this is the only one license for retailer and if we're talking about increasing the amount of, I guess, reduction to access, you know, access reduction, it's not going to have a huge impact on staffing in that regard. In the last, since beginning in 2013, we've only arrested a handful of people for possession of marijuana. So we're talking about a very low amount of arrests associated with that. And I think if we're talking about two processor growers, we would have, I mean, it's a slight increase of what we currently have with our collective gardens. It's doubling that. And we would still have to do continuous checks with those as well, but not a adverse impact.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question. What's Smamish doing?
I know Smamish has a moratorium and it goes for, I believe until May, but beyond that, I unfortunately don't know what their current status is.
And we talked about concentration versus dispersal. So, have you talked at all about what that might look like for concentration?
So, I think, so the example I used where if you wanted to concentrate, the probable best idea would be to concentrate it in the intensive commercial zone. So what you would do is you would say these facilities are allowed in the intensive commercial zone. That's the only zone they're allowed in. It's a very small area of town at this point because the intensive commercial zone used to encompass a large quantity of Rowley's area, but that's now under a development agreement, so it's no longer zoned that. That would be the easiest way to do concentration because it's a small zone in a, you know, in a very defined area.
For people watching, where is that?
Let me pull it up on the screen so everybody can see this. So, this is, let me zoom this in just a bit so I'm not seeing quite so much. And I apologize, the resolution of this is not that great. But this is a very simplified map of the city. So these areas in yellow right here would be the intensive commercial zone.
Just hit the plus sign. You can drill in. Yeah.
A little more. Is that a little better? So, you can see I-90 going through the middle of town. This is Gilman Boulevard right along here. And so this would be Front Street going into the freeway and then turning into East Lake Smamish Parkway. So the intensive commercial zone is only the area which is essentially east of Front Street and south of Isquah Falls City Road and back where the city public workshops are. There's a trailer park back there. One of our collective gardens is back there today. Of course, Lakeside's gravel operations are further up the hill. This, by the way, just in a general sense, this is a map of Isquah's commercial zones with the 1,000-foot buffers chopped out. So, because everything else in Isquah is a residential zone or an urban village zone.
Jason, I just lost the thought of what I was going to ask you. It'll come back to me. Other questions? Oh, I know, I'm sorry. I remember the question I was going to ask. So, you have in the pros and cons of the various options before us. One of the cons of a ban is potential legal exposure for somebody who really doesn't like us having a ban. Do we see any elements of our, of 6705 that would, that are particularly risky?
I would say none of the requirements in there are particularly risky. You know, so the general answer as far as the legal risk, whether it's a full ban or even dispersal, is that, so right now, nobody has standing, or rather, half dozen people have standing to sue because they've been issued licenses. But nobody in Isquah currently has standing because there's no licenses issued. What could potentially happen is if somebody were issued a license and we said, "No, you can't do this", they could sue us. Whether they would win or not, I have no idea. So that's the legal risk. None of the things you see in 6705, the revised version, really rise to that level. You know, we're talking about, we're requiring additional security cameras. You know, is there a legal risk from that? Sure, of course, there is a little bit, but probably not very much.
And nobody sued us over the dispersal requirements on medical marijuana, correct?
Correct.
And we're talking about one license right now, but there's been a lot of press about whether that will, whether that could grow because of the opportunity that the state has to generate more revenue, right?
Correct. The big picture answer is that the Liquor Control Board has, is aiming to grow enough marijuana, the 2 million square feet of production, to capture roughly a third of the market as they see it. Whether it's a third of the market or half the market is open for a lot of debate because, of course, you're talking about an illegal substance. The, you know, the intent of I-502 is to capture as much of the market as they possibly can, meaning as close to 100% as they can. So long-term, there is an argument that they're going to increase the increased production, increase, possibly increase the number of retail stores if they believe that they need to do that to help capture more of the market. That's not in the cards today, and it may not be in the cards for years potentially, but it is a possibility.
Yeah, I have another question. Pubbling up, yes. So there, of the, not options, what are we calling them now?
Choices.
Choices.
Policy.
Policies.
Policy question.
The last one was do nothing, I think.
Yes.
And so what is the effective outcome of doing nothing compared to having a ban?
The effective outcome is we, the administration would interpret the land use code and our other, and the rest of the municipal code as it exists today. And we would attempt to decide, well, does a marijuana retailer match up with any listed land use in the land use code? And if so, where would that be? So, for example, if somebody applied for one next to QFC, because according to that map, you could do it next to QFC on Gilman Boulevard. We would look at the code and decide whether that matched up or not. If somebody applied for a producer license, you know, you could argue that's more of an agricultural use. Where do we allow agricultural uses? And the answer is in a couple of our single-family zones, mostly along Tibbetts, you know, in the Tibbetts Valley and the Isquah Creek Valley. So I don't have a good answer beyond we would do our best.
Jason, when you look on the figure behind you, which I don't think was in our packet, there's two little odd areas marked down around the creek. Are there any other funny little things like that in town where a little parcel shows up that it would be allowed on as a retail use?
So I do have to apologize a little bit for that. So, what we did is we used GIS. We drew the 1,000-foot buffers, which are not shown because they cluttered the map, and then just left any part of any zone land that's outside of that. However, Liquor Control Board's interpretation of their own 1,000-foot rule is that it's parcel line to parcel line.
Okay. So those little things would fall off?
Yeah, they would fall off. You're not going to have one there.
So there isn't anything unusual. The large, big, pink block makes sense and that's pretty much what it is.
Right.
So Booms Chocolates would not be selling empty brownies anytime soon.
Could be good, but.
Thank you for that clarity.
The intensive commercial zone is just the yellow?
Correct.
And the pink is?
The pink is an amalgam. It's zoned mixed-use and urban core, I believe.
Does the, I thought, I read that there's a conflict because we, there is partly stated that you wouldn't have it in residential areas, yet you could have it in a mixed-use. Was that resolved?
That has not, that has not been resolved. That's, I didn't mention it. That is something that the council could consider. It was brought up as an issue with the proposed collective garden on First Place.
So is there any place in the central business, not central business, the central Isquah plan that is strictly retail that doesn't have mixed-use allowed?
The closest you would come is the destination retail zone and the intensive commercial zones. The destination retail zone is along east Gilman Boulevard, so east of Front Street. But with the buffers, you can have a marijuana facility and then, of course, the intensive commercial zone.
We solved this problem, it would go away?
Correct.
So this has been a great round of questions. I want to take a pause right now. And we don't, I'm not wrapping it up. I want to offer, we have at least one representative from the public here. And I want to ask if you, if this gentleman would like to make any comments for the council's consideration?
Yes, I want to, but I don't want to because I don't want to be a public speaker, so.
I'm sorry?
Yes, but I don't want to be a public speaker, so no, because I don't like that.
Please, you know what? Please, just, you know, be at ease, just as very. Okay, hold on just a minute, Steve. See that light? That tells me that that mic isn't turned on or he needs to speak into it.
Light's on now.
There you go. Steve, you're hired.
Okay. So, I live at 170 Northeast Dogwood Street and pay my mortgage, like a lot of people, for the privilege of living here in Isquah. So, again, not being a gift to a public speaker, haven't brought any prepared remarks. So, a couple of thoughts come to my mind. I'd like to see a ban permanently enacted on recreational marijuana. And a couple of thoughts come to mind as far as civic lessons, and that's, the voters of the state have decided recreational marijuana should be allowed. I guess I thank those people who bothered to vote as a civic lesson. Thank you for voting. I disagree with that decision, but I recommend or appreciate that it was done by an elected decision. It's unfortunate, though. I think only 50% of the people who are eligible to vote are even registered and even 50% of those who actually registered bothered to vote, so there's that. A second civic thought is that nobody, I think I've heard jump up and down, say, "I want to pay taxes. I look forward to it", but it's our duty as citizens to support the things we care for. And I think it's kind of a cheated way to say we're just going to put syntaxes or raise revenue by growing marijuana as a way to make that happen. If we want good schools, we want a good police department, where we know our officers by name, or any number of things, then we have a duty to stand up and say, "I support these things." I know I don't have any kids in the Isquah School District yet. Schools are something Isquah is very much known for. So, I don't like. we need to stand up and, and contribute as a society to make that happen. A third thought that occurs to me is that there's a lot of things that Issaquah has tend to be known for. I think 21st, for the 21st year now, Issaquah is recognized as a tree city, and we kind of pride ourselves on that, on Issaquah schools. I think we have an opportunity to enact a ban as another way of saying Issaquah is something different than any place else. We're not just, we like, seek to be like everybody else, but we seek to be different and unique. And here's something we believe in, that we don't need this as a source of revenue to be different and make, add as a point of pride. I don't think putting a ban does anything that if people choose to get high, they certainly can do that. We just say you can purchase your products someplace else rather than here in Issaquah. So let's use this as an opportunity to say Issaquah is different and we're not infringing anybody's right to, I guess, right to consume recreational marijuana. We just are saying we don't choose to benefit and we don't choose to set an example for those who are younger that they need a recreational use to change their perspective on life and their ability to contribute to life and be productive members of society. I don't make any judgments on those who do choose to use recreational marijuana. I'm sure there are fine, outstanding members of society that do. I just can't reconcile that difference between being part of a community and, and choosing to zone out, I guess, by getting high, for lack of a better term. So anyway, I'm looking forward to a permanent ban being put in place, so I hope that the council will take that under advisement and consideration. And I think that's about the end of my eloquent remarks, so...
Thank you, Steve.
Any comments? Oh, one of the thought, there was, when I came before the council a couple months ago, there was a discussion that maybe there are some differences in how marijuana is listed from other drugs, the type 1 drug or type 2 drug or type 3. I don't know enough about the, of that policy, but if, it's, I guess it's fine if Issaquah wants to have a public debate on whether or not there should be differences or how they're categorized, but I don't think this is that question. I think this is just should America, should Issaquah choose to participate in a voluntary action in selling recreational marijuana? And I think the answer should be no. So, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Thus ends our public comment section. And I like the idea. I mean, we, there was a lot of good questions, but the pause maybe helped you formulate some others or whatnot, so let's try, I guess we can try to wrap it up. If there's any more questions, now's the time to ask them.
I don't have any questions. I imagine that at the end of this, we may want to share some thoughts on this with each other. Obviously, we're not taking any action this evening, but just, you know, to share some of our observations that we've seen over the course of this. Is that...
I think that would be an excellent opportunity. And just, let's put this in some context. There is an agenda bill, and, and it has been to your committee, but you have not referred it back to the full council yet.
Correct. We have basically...
Still in committee.
We've essentially held on to it under the mistaken hope that the state legislature would, would help, help make this easier for us.
Clarify.
The now empty hope.
Okay.
So, so now we, I, I see no reason for us not to look at it in, in committee at, the only, the only thing on timing that I want to make sure is we, there's a, there's a real discrepancy between the number of people we have here tonight and the number of letters we have received on this issue. And I think we saw that on medical as well. We were all surprised by how little public comment there was on medical. I suspect that if we, if we afford more opportunity for, for public input, we will see more public input on recreational than we did on medical. So, so my thought is whatever schedule we come up with for closing it out at Land and Shore, bringing it to full council, we want to maximize our opportunity for public input.
Okay, thank you.
Now, if...
Stacy, and do you have comments, Nina?
Well, no.
No, no, what, Stacy then Nina.
I don't have questions, yes.
Stacy then Nina.
So my question is about the process. Is this going back to planning policy?
So we had an open house at Planning Policy Commission last Thursday. One member of the public was there. We had, we did have all the commissioners and a couple of the, a couple of city council members popped in for a bit. The, the person who was there is one of the potential retail licensees. He had a lot of questions and, of course, would be in support of, of not doing a ban, if you will, of adopting some kind of regulations or at least allowing it, but didn't, you know, but that was all we got because there was only the one person.
Are there, is there another opportunity for Planning Policy to alter their recommendations or, or is that done?
There could be if the council so desires.
What do you mean by that? I mean, if we decide to send it back?
Yes.
But we've had no request from PPC to do so.
Correct. I would also point out that, you know, as of May 1st, there will be new commission members for all the, for all the boards and commissions, so, you know, there, there might be an opportunity, but there might, you know, but there might not.
Nina?
Well, I just have some general comments.
Please.
It's great to be part of the conversation, and I, I'm gonna be bold and put some cards out on the table here. And, and a sign of character is that I might change my mind in the future, but I haven't changed it yet, so I'm gonna go ahead and put my cards out. One thing is, is I appreciated the comment from Steve about revenue, and I want to assure anybody that no revenue on earth could make my, change my decision. It's, it's not based on anticipating any, any income. It, there wouldn't, I just can't imagine that being ever in my thoughts. But I have, have never been in favor of us licensing in this marketplace in Issaquah for producers or retailers. And one, though it's a very complicated issue and we have limited time, it's a complicated issue, but we have limited time, so I'll just limit my, um, thought process to, to this in that it doesn't, to me, seem that the marijuana marketplace has the mechanisms that other products do. A lot of people like to compare, well, boy, we have alcohol, we have retail stores, and we have grocery stores. And I think, well, alcohol has a whole nother mechanism of regulation around it, and it's very strict, and it is supported on the federal level. We have large agencies like the alcohol, tobacco, and firearms, and explosives, and the FDA, whereas we don't have that here. I am, I was intrigued to learn that the Washington State Liquor Control Board evaluates and audits the THC concentrations, and maybe that is adequate. I don't know. I don't know that yet. But to compare alcohol and cigarettes to this marketplace doesn't convince me to be supportive of having it in our city. So I am currently wishing we had a ban and, until there was something, you know, it's not a ban forever. It's a ban until something in this marketplace matures. Because the reason for legalizing it is to reduce risk to users, I think. People aren't saying legalize it because I want it. People who want it have it. But we want to legalize, those of us who don't use it want to legalize it so it's a safe marketplace, and we don't have all the mechanisms in place for that. So for the city to go forward with the marketplace would be immature, premature, excuse me, premature. That would be why I would not be in favor of, or why I'd be in favor of a ban. And a ban would help stave off the risk of having no action taken and a licensee from the state coming in and pursuing justice where we had not set out guidelines. That's all for today.
Thank you, Nina. Does anybody else have any general comments to share?
Well, so, this is interesting. I, I thought this evening was, was gonna be more difficult for me, actually, than, than it turns out to be. I, I view almost any issue that, that comes before almost any elected body in this country is you can frame it between individual liberty and sort of collective responsibility or the right of, of groups of people to set policy for, for their places, right? And, and in this particular issue, it's around the issue of public safety, right? And, and I believe you have to default to individual liberty unless there's a compelling reason not to. And I was concerned because I had a nightmare scenario that I thought, oh my goodness, what if Issaquah crafts a really thoughtful, public safety-based response where, you know, we look at, okay, we've got 30,000 people in our city and, you know, perhaps one retail establishment, and then every other municipality on the east side enacts a ban, and we have a 500 to 700,000-person catchment? And the public safety implications and the, you know, implications for the IPD is very, very different. So to me, coming in and seeing at the end of this document what our, what our fellow municipalities are doing, I mean, one of the things, you know, Jason didn't mention, Burien has gone to zoning, Des Moines has gone to zoning, Montlake Terrace has gone to zoning, Muckelteo has gone to zoning, Tukwila has gone to zoning. It's clear that that public safety concern that I have is, is extremely unlikely to come to bear. And so in the absence of that, you know, I have to say that, you know, I don't, I'll say the thing that everybody says, I don't, I don't, I don't partake of marijuana. I, I think it's, it's a terrible idea for, you know, young people to, but I think that, again, in the absence of a compelling reason for society to enact, you know, authority over people, I think they should only do that where they have to. And I think in this particular case, when you look at what the, what the voters of the state, the state have done, I, I come away from this, this information this evening much more comfortable that, that I don't have to make, that I won't necessarily down there and have to make a terrible decision between individual liberty and, and public safety. It's kind of how I, how I view it.
All right, thank you. Mary Lou?
I wanted to thank the staff. Actually, I think they've done a really good job the last few months. I've only been on Land and Shore for about half of this, but the draft regulations and the reports and whenever we ask for additional information, you're doing a lot of research, and that's really, really helpful. And it was nice to have the police department here tonight. I think what I heard actually made me feel a lot better. Glad to have their input. And I, I think overall, I'm more in line with what Tola is saying about, I am not in favor of a ban. However, I have one caveat on that, and that is that I really do feel like what I anticipate could happen, how it would work in Issaquah would dramatically change if all the cities around, around us did ban it. So I'm, the, the whole thing that I'm waiting to hear is what's gonna happen within our little neighborhood of cities here, and that would be the only thing where I might want to reconsider whether or not I think this can be done successfully and safely within the community. That's about it.
All right, thank you. Any comments? Stacy?
So as I consider everything we've heard and what direction we might take, I, I have the assumption that we will be issued more licenses in the future. I, I think that has to be an assumption when, when we decide what we're going to do. I'm obviously looking at ways to balance the will of the voters with our community's desires, just as we did with medical marijuana. I'm, I'm concerned about a few things that are, I think are significantly different than alcohol and even smoking, and that is, for example, odor and walking through clouds of smoke. And, you know, you don't get high really when you walk through cigarette smoke, it's dangerous in other ways. But, so I'm concerned about that. I still have some concerns about public safety, particularly if we get more in the future. And so I'm, I haven't ruled out a ban for many of the same reasons, excuse me, that Mary Lou talked about. But I'm also interested in the concentration, the zoning. I think that if there was not a ban, I think that makes a lot of sense.
This is great, just open conversation because this is not a vote, but it's just kind of we're all sharing, you know, what we're thinking at the moment. And I especially appreciate, Nina, you know, just, you know, starting that off the way you did. That's, that's very, very helpful. I, and I don't have very, speaking for myself personally, I have somewhat mixed emotions about this, but I do believe, you know, this particular substance, you know, you talk about marijuana, a lot of good people have been made criminals by, by their actions. And I think that the best way to educate and regulate and have a healthy community is to bring it out into the light. I think suppressing it, chasing it away, you know, making it criminal. We've decriminalized it at the state level recreationally, and I, I think that in this particular case, for this substance, that's the direction I think we should keep going. So, and, you know, we have a role in this. The, I, I will admit that when we laid out our agenda for public meetings for this, that I'd hope that there would be a lot more participation from the public. So, and, and I'm deeply appreciative of everybody, such as, as we had tonight, people stepping forward. I so admire people who speak in public, who otherwise, you know, because they feel so passionate about something. That's, that's what moves me as a legislator, if I'm undecided on something. So that's a very important process. And yet, when I, when I think about this issue and how the implications of it, by the, just in terms of a numbers game, the, the low turnout that we have had, I, I read that as they're deferring to our judgment. A lot of people are deferring to this council's judgment, so I take that, you know, very, very seriously. But, but as, in terms of, you know, this substance now, the way it's currently defined, Nina, very, very good, elegant points. And I think I'd say the same thing as you, is like, this is where I am right now, but, you know, my, I could change my mind. But, and it's just along those lines of, of that, I like Tola's point about individual freedom and, you know, do we have to keep people from harming themselves? Well, I think there's a lot of harm with the current state, at the federal level, for the laws around this, around marijuana. And I think that instead of a war, you embrace it, you put the light on it, you control it, you educate it. And there's, we have an opportunity to actually make a better community by doing that. That's my belief. So those are my comments. And unless anybody has any others, and to our guests here this evening, Jason, echo Mary Lou's comments. Thank you for your very thorough, professional, complete, timely work. Commander Beerbaum, thank you for being here tonight. Commander Cotton?
Inspector?
Stan, thank you for being here. And Steve from the public. We have no other agenda items for tonight, so this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Tim.